Preston County Commission. Today is April eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show that Commissioner Smith is absent today. Commissioner Thomas and Stone are present. Do we have anyone from the public to be recognized that is not on the agenda? Thank you. All right, take a review of the bills.
Matt, this time I would like to approve the bills that have been properly presented and reviewed.
I will second that motion.
It has been pro-
That's me.
That's right.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the bills since they have been presented and reviewed. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes.
We're not having go on.
Yes, but that's always. For us, just nothing from the assessors' office we do, but there's no one here to present that. So we will just move forward, and then if she shows up, we'll circle back to it.
Okay.
All right, we'll go ahead with our nine thirty-one appointment on the agenda, and we need to officially set the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four levy rate. We have, hold on a second. There's no tax rate increase from previous years. The Class One will be fourteen point three, Class Two, twenty-eight point six, Class Three, fifty-seven point two, Class Four, fifty-seven point two. Let's see. Shall we get all of this listed here? Current year, Class One, one point three, Class Two, two point six, Class Three, five point two, Class Four, five point two. Total projected property tax collection is six hundred twenty-seven million, three hundred and thirty-nine.
Thousand.
Thousand.
That's the excess.
The six hundred twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine, yes.
Regular.
Six million, okay.
Yeah, he just got.
All right, I apologize for that. Total projected tax collection for the twenty-three, twenty-four year is six million, seven hundred sixty-two thousand, seven hundred twenty-three dollars. And then the projected property tax collection is six hundred and twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
Access.
For the excess levy. The excess levy had to be rolled back due to the fact that, under the maximum levy rate, allowed, the estimate amount of money collected would exceed six hundred and thirty thousand dollars, which is capped, they capped it out for the fire levy. So we will need a motion to approve those.
At this time, I would like to move to approve the levy rates for regular current expense levy and the access levy for the two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four fiscal year.
I will second that motion. It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the levy rates for regular current expense levy and the excess levy for the twenty-three, twenty-four year. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes. All right. And if anyone needs a copy of that, we do have that.
Need it.
I'll get that for you, thank you. All right. At this time, we'll go with our nine thirty-three appointment. We have Dwayne Hamilton from the OEM nine-one-one center with the budget revision.
I just have a budget revision, this is basically internal budget revision moving around. I have some money to cover some line items, which is. Total amount was twelve thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one. We're deducted from one line item. Cutting twelve hundred sixty-one, or twelve thousand, six hundred and twenty-one in overtime budget and two hundred professional services.
Okay, where's the? Oh, okay, I see, I see. What is the first line item there? Which budget is that?
That's the extra help and overtime.
Extra help and overtime.
Or extra help, yeah.
Extra help into overtime and?
And professional services. Yeah, those two hundred point of professional services.
Take the motion, or there are no other budget revisions?
At this time, I would like to approve this budget revision as it has been presented.
I will second that motion. It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the budget revisions as presented from the OEM nine-one-one center. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes.
And if you don't mind, I'll take this opportunity to update you on the search that went on last week. Your old bird, he is now home in good condition. So again, like, thank everybody involved, came together, paid a successful search. Where we found him, he was never returned, an eighty-seven-year-old man killed out there.
How far did he?
He was actually twenty-eight miles up in the mountain, the structure. So he'd actually been in the terrain. The treble, broad trees, you name it. And again, twice last week, Maryland Church filed in here, has been here to assist us. And I mean, very, there was really no other way to get him out of that. Thank God the weather was good. We were able, because carrying him out would have been, it didn't mean, it could have happened, but it would have been rough on him and rough on everybody. Just like I said, it would have been long carry out. It was bad humps walking out.
They're a great help to Preston County when I was out on that Williamsville Newberg call. They found that lady. By my understanding, they fly out to West Virginia, right? Because they're?
They're close to, yeah.
Yeah.
Right. They've always been great to come help. They actually were here two days. One day when they were flying looking for him, it was clear. And then the second day when they come in to be rescued, so.
Great.
And then they didn't want, they actually did an air rescue with the rocks as well. Because of the inability to get him out there as well, so.
Quite busy lately.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to be wrong riding that little cable. I would think of being in this.
I was watching a clip that someone had put onto social media of the one that took place down on the Chief River.
And I watched it.
At what they called the big splat, I believe. And it was so windy that they had a cable tied up on the bottom to keep him from flying into the rocks and stuff, all the canyon little area they were trying to raise him out of. It was like something to see.
When they, they set him up as well, they have to keep it, a great one to keep it washed.
Could you imagine being in that thing secured, being lifted to that helicopter?
Not for me.
For natural choice.
Everybody came together and then, you know, the community and stuff. I mean, we had people bringing food. Red Cross was there, brought some stuff. Ma County, you know, brought their command center up. It was just a good collateral that they had to come and place part.
Definitely a lot of thanks and blessings to everyone that took part in that and find him, and he's recovering well.
Yep, he's living all down.
It's amazing.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Thank you, um, Davey Lane.
Thank you all for your support then as well.
All right, we will move along next. We have Stacy Greaser with our Voca federal grant contract. Good morning, Stacy.
Good morning. So, you know, this is just the federal part of the funding for my grant. I sense they split it.
Okay.
Our, our federal part, state?
Yeah, we've already received all the state money. But this part runs from July one, two thousand twenty-three, to September thirty, two thousand twenty-three.
Okay.
An amount of twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars. So I just have to get the document signed and return with them.
It says twenty-five, seven thirty-seven?
Yes. And all the yellow ones are used, and we have that in the purple ones on us, so I'll have to take it.
Okay.
Okay, well, at this time, I would like to move to approve the grant contract agreement between Division of Administrative Services, Justice and Community Services Section and the Preston County Commission. And authorize the President to sign it.
I will second that motion. It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the federal grant documents with Voca and the Preston County Commission authorize the President to sign. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes.
You want us to go, we'll come down, give them to me?
Okay.
Can we just give them all the DVD and all, we'll get them all from her as long as she can come in later?
Then they're coming in later?
Yeah.
I'm telling you, she's a trooper. She's been getting around pretty good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This one, grantee. Number three, Ben Bellin. I made an authorized grant to him who was here. Kind of dicked up, just misplaced a little. What is today's date? Eighteen?
Eighteen, it's tax day, everyone, just if you need a reminder, tax deadline date. Oh, we have tax officer, his operations.
Good morning.
Great, thank you.
Just give me one second, and we'll roll back to you. Pink is another one. I think I got every place on these TD, and you'll check those when you show up, just on the chart, and then send them. All right, we're going to back, loop back around to our tax correction list. We have a representative from our tax office here, and you'll go ahead and present those, that would be wonderful.
I would look to do that.
Just tell us more about it.
We just have one exoneration, it looks like Benjamin Boyer, the twenty-four Chevy was turned in by mistake. Do you need the grand total?
Just the total?
Three hundred forty-nine dollars, seventy-two cents.
Okay, perfect.
Well, Matt, that's the only one?
Yes, that is the only one that was on her desk.
Well, at this time, I would like to approve the tax correction list for Boyer, Benjamin R., personal property, two thousand twenty-two, for the amount of three hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents.
I will second that motion. It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the tax correction list for three forty-nine, seventy-two that's been presented from our tax office. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, we will move along. Arthur O'Hara Heritage is not here yet. So we will go forward with an approval of the minutes.
At this time, I would like to approve the minutes for March twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, regular meeting, and March thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, special session.
I will second that motion. It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the minutes for March twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three, regular meeting, and March thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, special session. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes. All right, the state settlement list.
At this time, I would like to move to approve the state settlement list for April fourth, two thousand twenty-three, through April fifth, two thousand twenty-three, for Elizabeth R. Hawkins and Donald Hugh Peaslee.
It's been properly, I will second that. It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the estate settlement list, April fourth through April fifth, two thousand twenty-three, for Elizabeth R. Hawkins and Donald Hugh Peaslee. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes. Next up, we have our EIVs.
At this time, I would like to move to dispense with the reading and open court of the proceedings of the clerk of the commission had on vacation March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three, through March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three.
April sixth through April twelve. You just said twenty-second, April nineteenth.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, correction, April?
Six through April twelve.
April sixth through April twelfth. Twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three.
I will second, you were, I think you just caught margin up there.
Okay.
I will second that. It's been properly moved and seconded to dispense with the readings and proceedings and vacation in open court session and enter them into record for April sixth through April twelfth, two thousand twenty-three.
Did you?
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes.
My apologies, TD, did you catch that? I accidentally said the wrong dates, April sixth and April twelfth.
All right, we will go ahead with Darlene Boyer from the Art for the Heritage and Elizabeth Safford Field with a funding request.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Beautiful day in Preston County, albeit cold. Let's hope we don't have our frost, because I think we're all planting our gardens. Anyway, thank you for seeing us. Elizabeth's going to be taking the house today.
Good morning, thank you for having us. We wanted to provide some updates on our funding requests, and we sent this letter to you last evening, but wanted to provide it in person. So first, we just wanted to reiterate our request for additional ARPA funds to cover the remaining balance for our fire and security system. We had a due material cost increases, it was ten thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty-three cents. A private donor gave five thousand dollars toward the project earlier this year, so we are formally requesting the five thousand eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty-three cents remaining. The second thing we'd like to bring up is that on February twenty-eighth of this year, we had requested funds from the county commission to help cover costs to replace our emergency, emergency replacement of some of our rubber roofs. But since the time that request, we've actually secured sufficient funding from private donors as well as a grant from the West Virginia Commission on the Arts to cover the cost of this replacement, so we're formally rescinding our request for this project, and we wanted to update you all on that.
Perfect.
Yeah. And the last thing we'd like to bring up is we have, you know, seen some articles in the paper, and there's been some precedent set about festival funding, and we would like to formally request twenty-five hundred dollars for two of our festivals. The largest is the New Deal Festival, which is July eighth of this year, it's the second Saturday of July every year. This will be our twenty-sixth year having festival. Last year, about thirteen hundred people were in attendance. And then we also have a smaller festival in the fall, about five hundred people were in attendance last year, which is probably double or triple what was the previous year for those festivals, increasing in terms of attendance. And both of these festivals are really focused on arts, culture, and heritage. We have live music, artisan markets, art shows, heritage demonstrations, exhibitions, children's activities, and much more. So that's why we are requesting funds to help promote these festivals.
Well, we, Commissioner Smith is not here today, so we're not approving any type of funding today. Certainly appreciate your very detailed reports that you always give, and appreciate the rescind of the request for the funding. That's always important, because a lot of times we don't get that update from organizations that request money. And I appreciate that you guys always continue looking for funding elsewhere, because the county commission surely has limits, so it all probably can't do. And so that's very much appreciated.
Where are we at on the funding for the roof?
Oh, we're fully funded.
We are fully funded.
They're taking their mission or their ask back.
It took a week, it took, where were we at last?
We were at nine thousand when Commissioner Thomas visited last week, and we had two donors come in, and?
And we got received notice of the grant funding.
That's, we were kind of counting on that. And, and we did, did get the ten thousand, and then we got the remaining nine thousand.
That's great, I'm glad everyone can pull together, and we're taking your two considerations in. But since Dawn here, Dawn here is kind of our policy not to approve anything.
We understand. And we just wanted, we're, we're happy to come and share the news with you, because we do know that you have many, many funding requests. And we, just like, we would appreciate if somebody did it to us, tick us off the box, and, and give it to some of you.
Appreciate that so much.
Well, we appreciate you all.
Everything is looking so beautiful out at the center.
And I had, yeah, I had a chance to go out and visit the two ARPA projects, which was approved by Mr. Dawn, Dave, and Samantha. And the outdoor space is absolutely beautiful, and you guys have a very good security system and fire system now, too.
We're excited about both of them.
Yeah.
Well, thank you all very much, and have a wonderful day.
I'll leave this for Dawn, in case he wants to.
We'll make sure to fill them in, thank you so much. All right, we're going to move along. We have nothing under the fiduciary commissioner report, brings us to our old business. We have ENS ordinance to stop, if I have anything to do on that?
Just one thing, I've been working through the service agreement for the agencies. And once Dawn gets back in town and things have sort of just slowed down in the future, I would like to say.
Oh, absolutely, we have to. I've got a couple things I've been working on, too, in anticipation of the upcoming work session.
Yeah, we've just had so much on Earth lately, we needed to.
Next up, old business, we have PSD number four, Board of Directors vacancy. At this time, the commission is not anticipating any additional letters for that appointment for the board. And so at this time, I think we can move forward with that. Do you have something for us?
Oh, that's just the original.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, so we, this will need a motion?
We need a motion, and just as it states the dates.
At this time, I would like to move to appoint Michael, oh, how do you pronounce?
Ripenthal?
Ripenthal, my apologies if I said that wrong, as a board member for a six-year term effective May first, two thousand twenty-three, and expiring April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-nine, for PSD four, Board of Directors.
I will second that motion and just come to a very good realization that he just said two thousand twenty-nine. Wow. All right, it's been properly moved and seconded to appoint Michael Ripenthal as a board member for a six-year term, effectively one, two thousand twenty-three, and expire April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-nine. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes.
I never been over.
All right, we'll move along. New business, application to use courthouse lawn for CASA for kids.
Yes, they have put in their request for Friday, April twenty-first, from nine AM to two PM. They will be holding a tabling event for Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Perfect.
Okay, so, yeah, I've seen a problem with that. Says something they've done, they've done that in the past.
Yes.
Well, at this time, I would like to approve the application to use the Preston County Courthouse lawn by CASA for Kids for their child abuse, their tabling event for Child Abuse Prevention Month.
I will second that motion. It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the use of the courthouse lawn for CASA for Kids for Friday, April twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three, from nine to two PM. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Next up, we have our wonderful facilities manager, Mr. Will LaRue, with some updates for us.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Good morning, everybody. We have some updates on some of the facilities. So if we may, we'll start off at the sheriff's office. The fire marshal is coming Wednesday. There's been a lot of speculation on what needs done with the sprinkler system and the fire alarm system. And we are very lucky, Wednesday tomorrow, he is coming, and he is going to assess the sprinkler system and the fire alarm system. And he is the authority having jurisdiction, so he can say, this is what I want. We will have, Panhandle will have folks from BUR, which, you know, normally does the sprinkler systems around here, since you have to be certified to do it. And they will be here to provide the commissioners with a price for that. Also, at the sheriff's office last Wednesday, the commission wanted a second look and advice on all the systems. So Commissioner Thomas came along, and we looked over all the electrical, the plumbing, the HVAC. Now, they did not have an HVAC guy there, but we have reached out to other heating and HVAC engineers to help us with that. Yeah. So, so they will advise the commissioners on, you know, what should be upgraded and the cost. They are going to also be with the fire marshal on the electrical panels, whether they should or shouldn't be upgraded, and, and all of that. So we will have, you know, a lot of the advice, but mainly Panhandle, Panhandle is getting all the information together so that when they start rebuilding the sheriff's office, it'll go very quickly. And of course, that is what we, we all want.
Well, thank, thank you, Joe, with that. I think the sprinkler system is going to be a huge factor on the.
Yes, sir.
The real unit.
You're exactly right. And, you know, now the speculation will be over what the fire marshal wants, because he'll be there, and he can say.
There's so many factors.
And then the commission, the commissioners then will have an exact, you know, quote on what will cost them and how to move forward, because, because he's the, he's the last guy, he's the one that we have to appease. So moving on to the assessors' office, we, the commission wanted the air quality in the assessors' office to be checked. And just at the end of the meeting last Tuesday, a report come back, and I wanted to share with the commissioners for their review before we shared it with the public. And really, it is really good news, because there was no mold or allergens or anything. And I'll provide the, the, I'll with a, with a copy of the report. But as the commissioners know, because they've had time to review the report, the only problem was there's higher levels of CO2. So the only way to fix that, of course, is to add additional outside air. So after we got the report back, I went and assessed the situation, and there it was, and in fact, a way for the system that provides HVAC and heating to the whole place, there wasn't a way to get outside air back in. And there was one little actuator that had went bad. So now, in the meantime, until the actuator part comes, we have opened the damper. And in fact, the outside air is already going into the space, hopefully that it will make things better. Now, the, the next good news for the commission is that CO2 is very easily for all of us to monitor. Like, a very, very cheap instrument can monitor the CO2. So we can, we can have a, you know, very upgraded, real-time, you know, estimate of how we're going with that. So I think that, I think that I want to assure the commission that I can very quickly get the CO2 levels down in that, in that office for you.
And that was a comment, according to the gentleman that took care of all of this for us, that is a common inside indoor office space. And it's just a, I mean, sometimes it's just as simple as opening a window. It's nothing that is going to cause, it was so insignificant that there wasn't a health risk for anybody with the level that it was, it's just literally just, just take care of it.
I'm not going to say we have issues in a lot of our other offices.
It's, and it's not our office specific, it's just any building that's ever shut up.
And, and, and that's a very good point, Commissioner Stone. To his report, it was a very common problem in older buildings, and of course, that's a very old building. And to Samantha's point, that it was, it's caused by the, you know, lots of folks in the office, you know, in the space that we have, you know. So, and seemingly, it's very easily to take care of. And we're also very fortunate that it's not, you know, related to mold or fungus or all these other things that it could be, so we're very.
You've got the fresh air moving, and we're good to go.
Yep.
So I just shift in all your expertise, because I would have never known what that was called or what that was. Providing the fresh air.
I'm sure you all would agree, it's very happy that they did, in fact, provide outside air, you know, and just in fact, you know, a situation where one little actuator went bad. But it also made, he, he also recommended, and we will have to get with Ms. Connie, and Ms. Connie Kimball, that they should let the supplier fan run. And they, they, I don't think they're, I don't know if they're altogether agreeable to that, but I think that we will in the future have to let the supplier fan run. I think that would get more outside air coming in from our actuator. But that's small potatoes, we can definitely, they're very accommodating, and I'm sure we can get to a quick agreement on that. So lastly, but not least, as you all can see, there's a lot of stuff going on at the courthouse as well. So the folks from Keystone Waterproofing has finished, of course, the Route Seven side, and it's super. It is completely done, and they're very nice, they wash the windows when they get done. So now they're on the Port Street side, and they had advised us that it was worse side for the repointing and sealing and the patching. But it, it, you know, I'm here to tell the commission it's not going to be as bad as what we originally thought.
Good, as far as costs?
So that, yeah, so as far as the additional cost for fixing the cracks.
I'm just, what exactly are you doing around the door? My apologies.
You are right, yeah, and, and we agree, and that is the ground. So Commissioner Thomas was referring to the front main entrance, which is basically the only entrance for the public. And, and he is right, there are some loose stones and stuff. So they, they will, in fact, that'll be their last time, and they will, they will repoint and reseal all that. It won't loosen.
I think that's from Saul getting up on, up on it. I think that's from salt getting up on, up on it.
So, so now, the maze has presented the threshold under that main entrance door. Now, that's really not one of their jobs. Now, they have been so kind to come and give us advice. I'm sure they can assess this on that. But to Commissioner Thomas's point, that is also caused by salt, you know, you know, bringing in the building. So we will definitely address that situation. Now, also, at the courthouse, really quickly, if, if folks are around over the courthouse, there was a grant obtained from the courthouse security grant, and we have started the progress on the family court remodel or upgrade. So the main job was to close one door, open one door, and add a room to make a new conference room. So the new, the new room is built, the wall is up, the drywall will be finished tomorrow, and we will start with the seams and everything. So that project is moving along very nicely. And before we're done with the family court upgrade, we will turn the bailiff's desk around, pointing towards the folks entering the courthouse. And there is a beam above the bailiff's that we will fix this, you know, this spring during the remodel, so. So the only other thing is, yesterday, up in Mark Plegerman's office, for some reason, his section of lighting went out. We determined that there was a bad breaker, so we made, we made arrangements with everybody, and we was able to take the panels apart. And we had a spare breaker in another panel, and we was able to make a schedule with everybody and change the breaker this morning between seven and seven.
Perfect.
So nobody was affected by the outage, and now everybody is back in business.
Thank you.
So thank you all so very much.
Thank you so much, Joe, for your knowledge and the team's work. And I'd really like to look into doing some more landscaping eventually, too.
It's a...
Bringing guys on at the courthouse. That's something we can do.
It's just kind of, it's just kind of long.
Yeah. But once they get the repointing done, yeah.
Thanks, Joe.
You're welcome.
Have a great day.
You, too.
All right. Move, move right along to our county coordinators report. We have several things that we've crossed off the list today, but won't be addressed today. But we'll start with the court security grant request for reimbursement and request for a budget modification.
Right, so... We can break this up into a couple. First and easiest is, we have a request for reimbursement to be sent to the state in the amount of sixteen thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars. That will cover the cost of the DVRs and servers. This has been an ongoing project for quite a while. We've now gotten that all together, so...
What was that total?
Sixteen thousand, five hundred and sixty-two.
Sixteen thousand, and that was the...
Those are the digital video recorders and the one server.
And this was, this was the court security grant project from two years ago?
Uh, this is the current one.
This is the current one?
Yes. In addition to the family court and security desk rearrangements, we had also put in money for these to help offset the cost of the DVR replacements.
My apologies, I got confused there. So all together, they're current project. Okay.
Was there additional? Was there additional to that?
Uh, we have another, another. The remaining money will be going in. That will be used for the materials for the, the work that Mr. LaRue was currently conducting.
The two thousand?
So I would ask that the commission...
What is, what is the two thousand? My apologies. What is the twenty-two fifteen?
We'll do that in a, in a separate...
Oh, my, okay, my apologies.
So this, I would request that the commission approve the request for reimbursement and that the president be authorized to sign.
Okay, at this time, I would like to move that the county commission approves the court security grant request for reimbursement in the amount of sixteen thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars and authorize the president to sign.
I will second that motion. It's been properly moved and seconded to authorize the request for reimbursement in the amount of sixteen thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars and authorize the president to sign. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes. Those two places, Joe.
Uh, yes.
I'm sorry, Joe, I was looking at...
Does it have to be on top? So the second part of this is, another part, another facet of the project was to install bullet-resistant material in some key locations, doors, desks, et cetera. We had requested money to purchase new panels, but it was determined that we have enough material on hand. It was back in storage. It is still up, it is still up to speed. It's, it's good stuff. So we would not have to purchase that. However, in looking at the family court rearrangements, previously, you have one large area reception waiting, and you have one camera that covered the entire area. Now that we are putting in a wall, and the entrance is now off to the side and obscured from the existing camera, it's felt that we would need an additional camera to go into the entrance area. So we are, we would like to request to the court security people that we take the money that had been allocated for the bullet-resistant panels, that's the twenty-two fifteen, and use that instead toward the purchase of an additional security camera for the family court.
Right, well, that seems like a, again, move, and we would just need a motion to approve that modification. Okay, well, at this time, I would like to move to approve the budget modification with courthouse facilities improvement, or no, courthouse security or court security grant to use the two thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars allocated for bulletproof resistant panels to cover the cost of a camera and the recorder, which is needed in the newly created waiting area.
I will second that motion.
And that this is a request to the state.
Yes.
And this is a request to the state for approval.
It's been properly moved and seconded to modify the current grant in the amount of two thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars. We've got a request to the state to modify the grant for the renovations to the new waiting area. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes.
Because they had allotted that bulletproof stuff last paper from when they did the doors, I believe, thirty years back.
Are we talking about the chamber?
So in absent, Commissioner Smith's absence, pretty much everything else on my list will be held until the next meeting.
Yes, thank you. All right. At this time, there is a mini-grant application that has come through from the North Preston Farmers Club. Commissioner Thomas has to recuse himself from any discussion concerning this.
I will recuse myself because of the many conflicts of interest, so I'm just gonna step out to the back for a sec. Just knock, knock when you're ready for it.
Okay. Hello, how are you guys?
I'm fine.
Good. You would just like to give me just a basic rundown? We certainly can't, I can't conduct business on my own without Commissioner Smith here, but you can give me some information, I'd be happy to share.
Our building has not been painted for only fifteen years, and it is in desperate need. We took pictures and gave them to Mr. Thomas, and he presented them to Joe, I think it is.
Yes.
And as of now, we have enough paint for one coat, but the guy that wants to do it wants to do two coats. But what we're asking for, the estimate he gave us was forty-five hundred. And we would like to have at least five, if possible, to have five, the other part of paint. One can of paint costs at least a hundred and twenty-five dollars.
For a five gallon bucket?
Yes, yes. And we need at least six of those buckets. And so, you know, we need help, and this building has been built between nineteen thirty-four and nineteen thirty-seven. A tree came into the building four years ago, I think it has been, and was rebuilt like it was supposed to be. The contractor was fantastic. When they got ready to do the roof, the insurance company said, oh, just get matching roofing. And he said, they don't make that kind of roofing anymore. And I'm not doing that because that destroys my name. We ended up with a brand-new roof, and the metal came from Billington, West Virginia, so... And our building is rented out for weddings, showers...
I attended a wedding there.
Yes.
I attended a wedding.
And family reunion, just about anything you want between May and October. And our rent is not high because we feel that that's not what the building was meant to be. And my sister and I's grandparents were one of the first families that helped start the Farmers Club. Anything that you can do to help us, we would very appreciate it.
All right, well, I certainly appreciate, appreciate the update. Do you pretty much consider it to be a community center for the area?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Anything else that you would like to add? Everybody good?
Just...
Okay, we'll definitely take it into consideration and see what we can, what we can do.
Thank you so very much.
I'll talk to Devin and Corbin Jacob for...
All right, we have no other budget revisions. Nothing under miscellaneous correspondence. Would you have a need for an executive session today?
I do not believe so. I think all those matters have been brought to your attention.
Okay, okay. All right. Well, we have nothing else to do. If you want to go ahead, I have just a couple things to chat about. We do have, and we talked about this last week, that there's the rabies clinic coming up on the twentieth of May from nine to one. Also, assessor's office will be there collecting dog tags, three and six dollars, depending on if you live in, the limits or out of the limit. Tax, just always keep in mind. Pay those dog taxes, that goes to help our county animal shelter. It's important that you remember that.
And that is a requirement.
It is, it is.
A lot of people miss that.
Also, the County Commissioners Association of West Virginia is currently hosting a contest, an essay contest, that goes through the end of the month. And April is County Government Month. So it's important to take the time and educate our, our young youth in the county on the importance of county government and what we do in their lives and the services that we help to fund, that help to protect them, and, and many other things. So as, as always, you know, driven around to the schools in the county, been working with Brad Markman at the high school, and he is working with the principals to see if they have a need or a want or a time slot that the commissioners could go into the school system. I've done this in, in the past, my entire tenure. I've gone in and, and talked with students. And when I do that, and they do participate, we've seen much success with our kids winning some of these essay contests and getting some funding for themselves and for their teacher and their class. So it is, it's a good program, and I'd like to see some of our eighth-grade students in the county reach up to this, so...
That's great. Thank you for all your work on that.
Busy time with the county commission right now, and just, last spring is here. Even the Mother Nature decided to trick us a little this morning.
The year was cold, good day yesterday.
With the changing of seasons, that keeps our facilities guys hopping along with all the other projects that we've got going on. Things are just very, very busy. So looking forward to warmer days and...
I'm just, I just got a few real quick things. I'm gonna do a four-H plug-in again. If anyone's really here, the four-H signups are open for state and county camps right now. And we're really wanting to see a good turnout. We're rebounding since COVID. So we hope to be back to normal this year with our attendance numbers, and it's such a great opportunity. That's, we were in, you're pretty much four-H leader. I'm a four-H leader, and I think you attended camp.
As a child?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Definitely. It was the best thing ever.
The best thing ever. So I'll be counseling both of them this year, along with a couple of state camps. Last week, I got to tour a lot of the completed ARPA projects. It's nice and disease, some federal dollars, a triple down to the county, going into good use. Then I just wanted to say good luck to everyone competing in the royalty pageant this Saturday. That's this Saturday at, you would know the time.
Six P M., doors open at five.
Six P M., doors open at five. That's always, I'm always there. I was King Buckley back in the day, not too long ago, and...
And something we will hop around.
It's always enjoyable to see new people around, take part in that.
Good process.
Okay, well, at this time, I would like to move that we go into...
We don't, I don't think we have an executive session.
No.
No, we don't.
Oh, we don't?
Mm-mm.
Okay.
I don't have...
There is no need. Do you have the need, Hunter, to go to executive session?
I thought yesterday you said, yeah, there's a need. No?
No.
Okay, okay. We're good then.
Super good. All right, do you have anything else, Joe? All right, anyone, DeeDee, anyone have anything?
I'm sorry.
All right, you're good?
Yeah, I'm good.
All right, at this time, this meeting is adjourned.
Yeah, let me, I need to make sure that...
What is it?